Let the record reflect, we have reconvened with all members present. Please, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
I have a motion for the executive minutes of March 10th.
So moved.
Second.
And we already had discussion, roll call vote please.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Walkowicz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
I'm going to abstain from the first part and approve the second part, I was missing for the early session.
Can I do that? Well, you can, you only have to abstain if there's substantial changes to the...
Then I say yes.
Okay. Okay. Welcome, and thank you for coming out on a Friday evening. We rescheduled this meeting in respect to the first night of Passover on Monday, so I thank the council members, all volunteers for giving up part of their Friday, and our dedicated residents for coming out and joining us for the meeting. A few things, we have one proclamation. From the library, just want to, public library wants to thank everyone's patience during the recent closing for the abatement project. The work is step one in anticipation of the HVAC work that will be done later this year, and the library is now reopened to its regular hours. And for those looking for a great part-time position for 180 days of the year, school crossing guards, we have listed it in the paper, and we are accepting applications for the position. It is part-time, approximately 10 hours a week, salary range 737 to 1631 an hour, and any interested applicants can go online to get the, or go to the Borough Clerk's office to get the application, or online at RoseNet, where you'll see review employment opportunities, so click on there, and mail or hand-deliver the application to the clerk's office. If you have any questions, you can call Chad Ripka at the 973-593-3005. Also, I just received a letter I will pass to the clerk, but this is a very nice letter from a Shunpike resident, and now that it's back to Little League season, and the, and also the height of Chatham Township Castle Park time, there's been some parking on, that has caused some issues there. The police department responded very quickly, and then came back with no parking signs to keep people safe on both sides of the road. And also want to note that this past week Madison lost a former resident, but someone certainly very important to Madison, Millie Gordon, the wife of Sam Gordon. For those that are new to Madison, Millie and Sam were institution in town. Sam threw rotary, very generous over the years, Millie always supporting Sam's efforts. Sam was a council member in the 1950s, and was instrumental, we lost Sam a few years back, but Sam was instrumental in securing Memorial Park, which we all enjoy now. Also, in 1950s, there was this discussion about selling electric utility, and it was Sam that led the charge, saying that would be a crazy thing to do. And also for those of us that lived here a long time, probably either got food from the Gordon's supermarket, or when they sold appliances, bought many appliances from them, I didn't have one, I always bought their scratch and dents, and so we've really lost a legend in Millie Gordon. Our thoughts go out to the family. I have Caroline O'Leary come on up. It is on, it is definitely on. We have a proclamation on Sexual Assault Awareness Month, April 2014. Whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month calls attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread, impacts every community member of the Borough of Madison, and whereas we must work together to educate our community about sexual violence prevention, supporting survivors, and speaking out against harmful attitudes and actions. And whereas the Borough of Madison strongly supports the efforts of national, state, and local partners of every citizen to actively engage in public and private efforts to prevent sexual violence, it is time for all of us to take appropriate action and support one another for a safer environment for all. And whereas Drew University student Caroline O'Leary and the New Social Engine Club of Drew University will hold a Victims of Sexual Assault Awareness Walk on Saturday, April 26, 2014, to raise awareness of sexual assault. Now, therefore I, Robert H. Conley, Mayor of the Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body, hereby proclaim April 2014 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and join the communities across the country to prevent sexual violence. Thank you Caroline, for taking the leadership in this.
(applause)
Hi, I'm Caroline O'Leary, I go to Drew University, and I'm really passionate about the topic of sexual assault awareness and prevention, and so I decided to try to organize a walk in Madison, and they've been very gracious about it. And we'll be holding the walk on April 26 at James Park between Condorsa Way and Park Avenue. Registration opens at 10, the walk will begin at 11, and it should wrap up by 12:30 at the latest, I would imagine. It's called the Nothing Less Than Yes Walk, and we have a website, nothinglessthanyes.org, where you can register and find out more information, and we're on Facebook and Twitter, and I think we have a Tumblr, so I hope you will all be there. Thank you.
Thank you very much Caroline. Recognizing it is a Friday evening, I'm already cooking, I hereby declare it okay to take off jackets if you're in the same position I am. Reports from committees, health, Mr. Landrigan?
Thank you Mayor. The Madison Health Department will be holding a female cancer screening clinic on Monday, May 12. It's open to all women 18 and older, with or without insurance. It is necessary that you make an appointment for this. The number to call is 973-593-3079. Thank you Mayor.
Thank you. Public Works in Engineering, Mr. Catalonello?
Thank you Mayor. The DPW continues to fill potholes, and today they started some more significant work on Danforth Road. Treadwell Pump Station is, has seen a significant amount of work over the past two weeks, where we are installing a generator, and also taking care of some of the overflow issues, potential overflow issues. There'll be a new dry pit pump installed at the Candlewood Pump Station within the next two weeks as well. So we're seeing some good progress on our sewage pump stations, and please bear with us, we know the potholes are bad on some roads, but you know, there's only so much you can fill every day. We'll get them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Utilities, Ms. Vitale?
Thank you Mayor, I only have one report, and, from the Water Department, and it's basically everything that the Water Department does on a continued basis, and they're doing a lot of markouts for utilities, for homeowners, and builder construction. If you look around Madison, there's a lot of construction going on, so that's, that's a very important thing, is the markouts. They're doing meter replacements and installations, which is good, some of the water meters are very, very old. So, one of the other things they have to do is if a resident calls and they need to get shut off of service if they're having plumbing work, so it's a continual, it's a continual cycle. They are doing all the chlorine maintenance of equipment at all the wells, and still working on the water sample analysis. That's, that's very, very important, because it gives us a reading of volatile organic contaminants and total chloroform. That's all Mayor.
Thank you.
Can I just make one remark, I know you don't like to do this, but I have, I have to say it. Couple of weeks ago, I was at Every 15 Minutes, I don't know if all of you know what Every 15 Minutes is, but Chad Ripka really worked for the past year on this presentation, and it was so totally awesome. And I was at the last one two years ago, they do it every two years, and they reenact a terrible, terrible accident involving teen drinking and whatever, and it's just a totally awesome thing, and it just moves, you know, from the accident scene to, so what you get to see is, you know, the ambulance corps, and the fire department, and the, the police department, and all of the organizations surrounding, including Marstown Medical, who brings in a helicopter to bring. One of the other things is, is that it just brings the person responsible right through the court system here, and our judge and the prosecutor and gives, give up their time, you know, to work through that whole process. So I talked to Chad, and it's, it's going to be, I think they're working on, FDU does all the filming and editing, and it's going to be quite a thing to see. What I think has happened in the last two years, since that first Every 15 Minutes, is there are less problems and less bad accidents happening in Madison. So I just want to say, you know, thank you to Chad and Darren for allowing him to, to take the time to do this, and you know, the Board of Ed encouraging, you know, the kids to see all of this. It was quite, very emotional, two days, so if you get a chance, take a look at it on their website, but I wanted to acknowledge, it was like awesome, totally awesome, very proud of our people.
Thank you for mentioning that, I was involved for part of it, and certainly is very impactful. Public Safety, Austria?
Yeah, thank you Carmel.
Yeah.
And we also are tonight approving a resolution for a new volunteer firefighter, Evan Webb, so I want to say congratulations to him. And then on Wednesday, we had a program where we offered free trees from the New Jersey Forestry. Drew University, Tina Notice and students led the distribution effort, and Madison Trees, Tina picked up 300 trees, we're only supposed to get 200 trees. The trees were in the 12 to 15 inch range, they'd been just dug, and they looked very healthy. All but 160 were distributed. Most of the remaining will be planted in the Drew Forest, and a few spruces will be handed out to Green Fair. Kathy Coltes took 24 for Madison's Tree Nursery at the Community Garden, and there were some residents from other towns who do not have such a program, who came over begging for free trees. So it was a very successful day for turning everything green. Thank you Mayor.
You're good, thank you. Finance and Borough Clerk?
Thank you Mayor.
Mr. Walkowicz?
I'd like to start off by telling you all that we have a memorandum of agreement between the Borough and the PBA, the Policemen's Union. It went very well, the discussions happened quickly, and the terms of the agreement are within the 2% cap that we unfortunately have to live with, or fortunately, depending on how you look at it. So that was, that was a good thing. We obviously have some more to go, maybe this is the beginning of a good trend, who knows, but at least we have one that's in great shape. I also wanted to talk a minute about tax appeals. We've had only 73 filed, that's actually less than we expected. It's lower than last year at this time, and we have no commercial appeals pending. You may recall at one point, we talked about putting money aside for tax appeals, we were quite concerned, or attorney was quite concerned. So far, looks pretty good. It's early in the process, good change, but the early reports are very good. The third, I don't want to put Councilman Landrigan on the spot, but I would feel badly talking about this in his place. Bob has at least two jobs, one of them is called working with FEMA, and he recently got what for the Borough is a terrific announcement regarding FEMA, and I'd like you to make it.
Alrighty. I had my final meeting with the State Representative, and it looks like we're going to get the $800,000 that they owe us, in addition to the 400 we already received, and we should get it, hopefully within eight weeks.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
(applause) Eric, that's it for me. Community Affairs, Mr. Rowe?
Thank you Mr. Mayor. First, the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee, the last AARP Tax Counseling Day was held on April 9. In the course of over nines, in the course of nine sessions, over 200 people were assisted by 11 volunteers, with all appointment slots filled during the last five sessions. I'm currently working with the Advisory Committee as they partner with the Chamber and Downtown Development Commission to reintroduce the Madison Access Project. Originally developed in 2006 as part of the Mayor's Wellness Campaign, this effort involves teams visiting Madison's businesses to increase awareness of inexpensive ways to accommodate older shoppers, citizens with disabilities, and families with strollers or carriages. Informational pieces are being updated, and the business district assignments will be made in May. For the Downtown Development Commission, The Taste of Madison was this past Monday evening, and by all accounts, it was a huge success. I want to congratulate the organizing committee and all the vendors who participated. Tonight we have on the consent agenda, a request to put up several mocked-up signs as the next step towards Phase 1 of the wayfinding program. This will help the DDC as well as other interested parties review the look and feel of the proposed signs, and allow all to check the readability of those signs before a significant investment is made in a larger-scale rollout. Also, May 1 is the sketch, the launch of Sidewalk Sounds, a new performance series on the sidewalks of downtown Madison. Concerts will be held every Thursday evening from May to September. There's also a consent agenda item on this tonight. May 3 is May Day, Mulchall Morning Feast on Free Pizza donated by Madison Pizza Places, and Live Music from 11 a.m. to 1 p.m. The DDC in Quest will hold another bowling fundraiser for the Y on April 17 at the Plaza Lanes. For $15, you can bowl for a couple hours, dine on free pizza and soda, and support a great cause. Finally, the Madison Chamber of Commerce, the Spring Sidewalk Sale and Merchant Open House will be held on April 26. This is going to be the same day as the Madison Little League Parade, Chamber's hoping to significantly increase downtown shopping that day. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Alright, we'll move on to the budget hearing, just so we understand how this process will go. I'll be opening the hearing shortly. During that time, anyone in the audience can come up, share your thoughts on the budget, or ask questions, and at that point, we'll close the hearing, and then we have two resolutions that will be passed. The first one is just an amendment, and so you'll see a movement, and a second on that, the council discussion will only be related to that amendment. Then we will move, and second, the Resolution 112, which is the adopting of the budget, and then there can be a council discussion on the actual budget. And what we'll do when we get to that part is, for equal time, is go reverse order, as we did when we introduced the budget two meetings ago. And a, for those in the audience, if you did not see this, there's a kind of little budget highlights on the seats, or it was at the door, so I hope you grabbed it. These one and a half sheets represent an incredible amount of work from administration and the council, and I appreciate everyone's hard work on a, what I would call a very positive budget, and we'll, we'll hear more on it shortly. And thank the council for all the discussions that happened inside these walls, as it should happen. So with that, anyone in the audience wishing to be heard, please step forward, state your name, your address, write the same on the clipboard, and keep your comments and questions to three minutes, but I won't, if there's a question in there, I won't hold the answer against your time, so don't worry about that. Anyone else, anyone wishing to be heard on the budget, please step forward. John, come on up.
John Hoover, 17 Overhill Drive. Bob, if I could, I'd give you a happy buck for getting the 1.2 million for Freedom Man, that's awesome, that's just great.
Thank you.
In terms of the budget, two thoughts that I had. One, I think the budget is solid, I think it was well put together, well constructed, and for me, the debate about property taxes versus utility, my property taxes went up 25%. I can control my utility, okay, but I can't control the property taxes. So I'd rather have, I think the budget as a proposal is just solid. Second thing I'd like to say is, I wish that every council member would not use the press to argue their points. Please do it behind closed doors. When you guys reach an agreement, everybody votes, everybody agrees with it, you come out and you support what's agreed to, okay? Or debate it in public like we're doing here, but do not use, that's my urging, is not to use the press, doesn't make sense, but thank you.
Thank you very much John. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Go.
Also, I'd like to thank Bob for that money, thank you very much, appreciate that. I'd like to thank, this is, going through the budget highlights, this is a great budget, it's very solid, I support it. So that's basically all I got to say, but I want to take a moment and thank everybody who's worked on this. All the administration, Mr. Burnett, Mr. Cody, I know he's not here, but Mr. Califfutt, who is? All the council, and all the department heads, everybody's done a great job. Thanks very much for your hard work, I appreciate it, I'm sure most of the town appreciates it too. And I know there's this discussion about the electric utility rates, but I agree with the majority of the council that we table it to next year. It was a good discussion, and it was things, it was good to bring it up, but there's no harm in bringing it up next year, and when we have a more studied decision to be made. I attended the, the budget meeting for the county on Wednesday at Marstown, and that passed, and I'm sure a lot of the freeholders who voted for the budget did not agree with everything in the budget, and, but it passed unanimously, and they had a solid budget, and this is a solid budget, and I hope the council approves it unanimously, because I think it deserves that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And just on the electric rates, what we have, was stated at the last meeting, was to make sure we start this discussion on the rates in the fall, and not, not wait until the new year, so we are ready to go into new year with a new rate plan. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Any?
I wanted to make a few observations about the budget process. First, as I understand it, we are entering a new method of purchasing our electric, and we expect it to offer better economics than our former contract, but it is not one without risk, and we do have limited experience with it. So I too am happy that we would wait to see how, what the results of that are. It seems to me that we should wait to find out what our surpluses actually are before we would offer any type of a rate cut. The budget proposal that we've seen, you know, I'm glad that it didn't include that. Secondly, it seems to me that electric rates weren't something that the town was clamoring about. As you know, when people are sufficiently annoyed, they tend to come here repeatedly and talk to you about that. And although I haven't been into as many council meetings as I had in the past, it just strikes me that that wasn't something that people were especially worried about. Roads seems to be the number one thing that people come here to talk about, and I think that this budget addresses, you know, begins to address our backlog of road improvements, so I'm happy about that. And third, although I understand that there is concern about using electric surplus to bolster our municipal budget to keep, to keep taxes in check, to me, I think it's one of the great benefits, besides the excellent service and reliability that we get from owning our own electric utility. And clearly, no one wants government to get complacent about it, and become overly reliant on it. So I would hope that one of the outcomes of the strategic planning process would be to recommend maybe a benchmark surplus percentage, or something of that nature, so that we'd have a better understanding how a particular budget stacks up, against what we think is a prudent amount of transfer, especially on the operations side. And I also hope that the planning process that goes along with that strategic plan will let everybody have a clearer idea of all of the needs that we're faced with. Sometimes I think that, you know, the roads we always see, but as you know, there's probably other improvements that need to be made to the utilities and other parts of the infrastructure that we don't all know about. So it's hard, I think, for residents to really know what the, you know, how a budget really is addressing those needs without having all of that laid out more clearly for people. And then, finally, I think that I would say that, although we don't want to become too reliant on the transfer of the surplus, since this surplus is already in the bank, I think we have a clearer idea, and I think that the town government has had to work with, you know, pretty flat budgets over the years, they've had hiring freezes and flat capital budgets, so I'm glad that this budget seems to address some of that backlog. So I too am very thankful for all the work that went into it from both the town administration side and the council, and I hope that you all will come together to vote for it unanimously. Thanks.
Thank you. And just a reminder with the, mention the strategic planning process, which is ongoing right now, and when it comes out, it will be a twofold thing. One is guiding the Borough in future years, but it will be an educational experience for all the residents. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close the hearing. Call up Resolution 111-2014. Resolution of the Borough of Madison to amend the introduced, sorry, the introduced budget.
So moved. I move ordinance 111, I'm sorry, Resolution 111-2014.
I second that. Any discussion on just this resolution? Pat?
I guess I'm going to say this now, because I believe the main reason we're reintroducing this, is there was a piece of the budget that was actually missing when it was first introduced. Mr. Burnett and I had a conversation about it once he told me what it was, and the one thing I would like to say is, going forward, that money should be moved into the municipal budget. I don't believe it belongs in the electric utility, especially now that we're going to be using it to generate shared surplus revenue, which I'm assuming is going to end up in the municipal budget. It also makes it cleaner in terms of being able to compare what it costs to run the Borough versus what it costs to run each of the utilities. So I'm not going to object to where it is this year, but next year I'd really like to see that money moved over, and I'm assuming there'd be a corresponding move of surplus over to cover it, since it's already being paid for out of there.
I think that's a valid point, so we'll, Jim, you may, go make a note of that, so, and Robert, so we'll, thank you.
Thank you.
Just real quick, just for clarification, all the information that was in the black book, all the information that was presented to council, none of that is being amended or changed, it was just when that information was transposed to another document, which goes down to the state, that, that there was one item that was missing, which is why that amendment is needed. So there's no changes to the decisions that were made in any way, shape, or form.
Thank you. Question, roll call vote please.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Walkowicz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Right, Resolution 112-2014, Resolution of the Borough of Madison adopting a 2014 budget and tax resolution.
Mayor, I move Resolution 112-2014.
I second that motion. Alright, as mentioned before, we'll go in reverse order from before, and it's fine to say pass, if I may call your name. Mr. Rowe?
Thank you, the first or last, and now the last or first. First, I'd like to thank the administrative team and the finance committee for all their hard work, especially Mr. Burnett, for responding to my dozens and dozens of questions and comments about the budget over the last couple months. I know what a time-consuming and challenging process the putting together a budget can be, and this year was even more difficult with the loss of a lot of race time because of his accident. I also appreciate all the time and energy that my colleagues have put into the process, and the input we've received from the public during the last three months. We may not agree on the best way forward, but I believe we're all doing what we believe is in the best interest of... is in the best interest of the community. I hope people understand that's my only goal as well. Although I'm very happy that we're finally be able to start working on our long list of capital projects, and I have wholeheartedly supported the maximum reasonable use of surplus from the electric utility for the past year and a half for that purpose, I will nevertheless be not voting in favor of the budget for two reasons. First, I don't think it strikes the right balance between the needs of the municipality and the needs of the taxpayers. Because of the large savings we'll be realizing as a result of the electric wholesale rate drop, we have had a major opportunity this year to carve out a reasonable portion of that savings for residents in the form of an electric rate cut. My goal was to utilize about 20% of the $5 million we expect to save on an annual basis to drive a 10% annual rate cut. How that gets implemented and was always gonna be going forward a subject of a debate, but now that the borough was finally gonna be able to see relief from its high wholesale rates, I think it was time to do the same for the community. Our residents currently pay the second highest rate in New Jersey, and a 10% cut would move them down closer to where PSCNG customers currently are. I believe that we've made some reasonable modifications to the budget. As Rob and I suggested back in February, we could have achieved a budget that both addressed our capital needs and providing savings for our utility users starting June or July 1st of this year. Instead, we're offering residents a budget with no tax levy increase, and some seniors are yet to be determined electric rebate. In total, this will only provide real savings of about a quarter of a fifth of what they could have received with a significant rate cut. It will help, but I know we could have done a lot more. I know everyone has said that they want to provide a rate cut in the future, but we are making it a very difficult task, we're making it a very difficult task with the budget we're about to approve. This year, we're gonna draw down 92% of the electric department's end-of-year surplus. This is something we've only done once in the past decade or so. That was at a time when the account was fairly low in 2010, after we had absorbed the doubling of a wholesale rate in one shot, but passed along the increases over a period of years. Additionally, as our own administrative team had pointed out a couple months ago, to sustain the current level of spending in the operating capital budgets, we're going to need to withdraw an even larger percentage of that surplus from the utility in next year and the year after. Probably relying on in-year transfers because the end-of-year totals will be significantly lower than the amount we're gonna need to budget. Second, we're not building a sustainable model for the future. In addition to the items I've noted above, we are increasing the operating budget by almost 5%. In a world of 2% caps, we should be taking a harder look at this increase. To sustain this growth, we've had to increase the amounts drawn from general electric surplus by 21 and 13% respectively. Again, we'll not be able to count on that level of support year after year, and it will be helpful for the future councils if we throttle back on the percent increases and started to utilize some of the general surplus to grow the capital budget, not just operating. I've tried to work with all involved since I was elected to achieve the above, but to date, the majority of council has not been willing to move on any of the ideas that we brought forth, so that even a portion of these goals could be accomplished. So regretfully, I will be voting no on the final passage of the municipal budget tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bailey?
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. I do support the budget as proposed. I think that the discussion for electric rates should be going forward because we have not seen what is going to happen with the new contracts, and we don't really know what the financial picture is gonna be exactly, and I am certainly open to that discussion. I did reach out to Mr. Rowe and had a good conversation with him about it. So I will be supporting the budget tonight, and I want to thank Mr. Wolkowitz, Mr. Landrigan, and the administration for putting together a terrific budget.
Thank you.
Yeah, you told me to be quick.
Yep. You have to vote.
Oh, I have to vote? I said yes, I was gonna support it.
No, we're still discussing. I know that, we suspended a two-hour party today.
It's Friday, it's hot, we're tired.
Ms. Vitale?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna be very simple and very straightforward about this. We've talked about this for months and months and months. The budget process starts somewhere in August, so you start becoming very aware of what the needs are, and, you know, as one of the speakers talked about tonight, one of some of the more contentious meetings that we've had is regarding our infrastructure, or the lack of is probably a better term for it. I have always prided myself on spending a lot of time and trying to understand different points of view, and this year, I had to really listen, and I came to a conclusion that I would, I would like to say to the people of Madison, there is no tax increases here. I am also very proud of the fact that we are going to help a segment of people, and we're talking about, actually, about 1,400 people. Now, we have 6,800, I think it's 6,500 households in Madison, and 1,400 of those are seniors who are disabled. I'm proud of the fact that we could probably help some people with their electric, with their electric bills, and because these are the people that built this town to what it is. I will say thank you very much to Ray and Jim, and you're not the only one that busted his chops for months. We all did that, asking him questions, you know, poor soul. But Ben and Bob Landrigan, you know, for being open and, you know, and always there to answer the questions. So I will be supporting this budget, and I just want to say thank you to everybody. It's not an easy task. It's an entirely different animal than anything you've ever seen as municipal budget. So thank you again, and I will support this very, very strongly.
Mr. Catalinello?
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, I'm a little hesitant, I'm kinda tired. I've had a lot of travel the past two days. So last year, in last year's budget, I pushed very hard for a 0% tax increase, funded through the recognition of healthcare contracts, which would have drawn down small amounts of incremental municipal surplus, and some spending cuts. That was branded reckless. I also was concerned about the county mandated revow, and not only about the fact that certain residents in Madison would be assessed higher, but as we all know, about 1/3 or higher, 1/3 or lower, and 1/3 or the same, so we just kind of reshuffle the deck. But I was much more concerned about the effect that the county, what the county revow itself would have had, where Madison was apportioned much more of the share of the county taxes. And because of that, I pushed very hard for not to increase the open space tax. And I also asked that we put more aside for roads. Now, all of those were rejected. This year, I've asked for a small increase in salary for our crossing guards, who I believe are the front line of defense against predators, protect our children, allies to our police. I have asked that the electric utility capital fund be increased by about $100,000 a year. Somehow, that didn't make it into the budget. And I've asked for an omnibus rate, electric rate cut. While some people might say that people, it's not a big issue of conversation, you know, I think, you know, last year was a big part of the campaign, and I think the polls show that people do want a lower electric rate. I am all for cutting rates for senior citizens, all for it. I am not in favor of asking a single mother, or a single father, or a young family starting out who makes $45,000 or $50,000 a year to subsidize someone who makes $85,000 a year's electric rate simply because of their age. Therefore, the only way I could support this energy rebate at the end of the year, which I'm sure it'll happen probably September, October, would be if it was need-based only.
I think that is the...
Well, not for... Okay. Furthermore, we've heard a lot about the strategic plan and how we must wait for the results of the strategic plan before we talk about a rate cut. I would argue, if you're going to use that line of logic, you should also apply it to drawing down 92% of the electric utility surplus in spending. If we're not gonna give a rate cut because we're waiting for the results of the strategic plan, shouldn't we then also be judicious in how we spend down the current surplus until we get the results of that strategic plan? I think we have to use that fairly as a decision-making tool. I would love to vote yes for this budget. You know, we, I think we made a heck of a commitment to the infrastructure of town. You know, I'm happy I voted for the increased spend on roads and sewers, but at the same time, I just, I'm just not comfortable with using what is essentially a variable revenue, our electric utility surplus, to fund fixed costs. Mr. Wolkowitz wrote very eloquently about the stealth tax in his white paper when he was running for office. It was a great paper. But I think it's time that the Borough Council really, you know, become truly transparent and help our residents understand what the true cost of government is. So by continuing to rely, or increasing our reliance on this variable revenue stream to fund the operating portion of our budget, I think goes against that, and it is not in the long-term best interest of our residents. I'm particularly concerned that the, that future budgets will rely on an even heavier, could potentially rely on even heavier drawdown of electric utility surplus. Again, if we're gonna talk about the strategic plan as a reason not to cut rates, then we really shouldn't be, you know, looking at a $7 or a $7.5 million spend from electric utility surplus next year. I mean, in the Hurricane Sandy, you know, 7 standard deviation move, what happens if we have a very cool summer and we don't generate the money? Are we gonna have to raise electric rates to fund our operating budget? We already paid the second highest in the state. I don't know. I would like to thank everyone for the work they did on this. I know, I know how hard it is, how much time it takes, we all are very busy. Like I said, I'm for, it's funny, it seems like everything that, you know, that for the past two years that we've been for, or I've been for, haven't made it into the budgets except for one year behind. So I'll be very happy next year when the crossing guards, you know, get the raise and the electric utility capital fund gets, you know, gets increased, or we spoke about going to some sort of a, you know, a rule-based system where we would fund our capital, and hopefully, we'll get an omnibus electric rate cut for everyone next year. Don't forget, over the past five years, the citizens of this borough have absorbed a $25 million hit in higher utility costs. To not give them anything back when rates fall, to me, is, well, it's just not fair. And again, I want to thank everyone. I think there's some very good, good, good parts of this budget. I love the focus on capital, I love the focus on strategic planning. I even like to focus on giving some electric relief if it's truly needs-based across the But, you know, I just, I'm just concerned about the reliance on electric utility, the use of variable revenue to fund fixed costs, and as such, I will, I will be need to vote no on this, and thank you for your time. And I'm sorry it took so long.
That's quite all right.
I've been on airplanes for two, three weeks straight.
I appreciate you being here after all the flight and that long day. Mr. Landrigan?
Thank you, Mayor. To me, the decisions and the discussion on this budget didn't start this year. It started years ago. When I first took office back in, I guess it was 2012, the residents of Green Avenue came to these meetings complaining about the deplorable condition of their roads, what it was doing to their property values, what it was doing to their cars, and to their safety. That discussion has continued till today, when the residents of Academy Road came to us with the same type of concerns. Now, to the credit of the borough, they put together this capital plan, and when I look at it, I say to myself, it's not just roads. We're looking at approximately $3.5 million a year through 2017 that needs to be done. Now, where do you get that money? With a 2% tax cap, it's not gonna come from that. And the residents of this town, yeah, they absorbed a lot, but they also just went through a revaluation, and to a lot of people, increasing their taxes another 2% would harm them. To me, there's work that needs to be done, and we best get started on it. During one of the meetings, Mr. Califford leaned over to me and said, you know, we're finally on the right track, and I believe we are. We've made a commitment to start the work on these roads now and the infrastructure now. If you wait, it's gonna be more expensive in the long run. We have the money now to at least make a good dent in it. Yeah, there's work that needs to be done, but then, how can you justify giving even 10% back? I mean, when you think about the money that the electric utility raises, so you say you give 10% back, that's $2 million. Now, that's nice to say to everybody, but that's $2 million less you have to spend on needed capital work. And I've heard people talk about the safety of our residents. Well, you know, you have to pick your priorities. When council members vote yes to do infrastructure work, when they vote yes to hire DPW employees, well, there's another side to that. You have to pay for it, and this is how you pay for it. We have, the source of the revenue is the electric surplus. I remember Councilwoman Vitale saying in an earlier meeting, that's what that money is there for. The townspeople pay into it in their electric bills, this is how you give it back to them in needed work. When you get your needs done, then you get your wants. And right now, this work needs to be done. I'd rather spend the money, pay now, and profit later. And as far as future money, you know, I'm brutally conservative, and I'm not gonna gamble our future on monies that we don't have yet. What we know now is that our electric surplus brings in X dollars per year. It will make a good dent in the work this year and in future years, and when that work is done, we can take a serious look at giving electric relief rate benefits back to the residents. So I will be voting yes for this budget. I think it's the right thing to do overall for the community. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Wolkowitz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was gonna begin by briefly reviewing some of the highlights of the budget, but I think we all know them, and they've been mentioned. There's something about being the last cleanup, you know, you have to very quickly change what you're reading because obviously, you're changing it in accordance to what you've just heard. But to go through it in a bit of detail, as you know, we are holding rates to zero, and with the revaluation and change in ratables, that amounts to a 1.32% decrease in municipal tax level. Last year, we're happy to say we were introducing the lowest increase in 10 years. This year, I'm even happier to tell you that we're increasing, we're introducing the greatest increase since 1997. So it seems to me we're on the right track. We've put together what I believe is a very strong budget that'll serve this borough quite well. Importantly, it's the third year of a fiscal turnaround, and in part, that's happened because of the impact of the two previous budgets. I believe that this one will contribute to continuing that favorable trend. We're on a roll, in a good direction, and what amazes me is when I hear conversation about this budget, it's as if we're draining Madison, you know, into some terrible financial place, going back to the problems of years ago. It simply isn't the case. I also wanted to point out that in spite of lowering rates, we have hired three additional police officers and two additional workers at DPW, I think kind of a nice thing to be able to say. Now, the other thing I wanted to point out is that we did indeed allocate 3.5 million in capital improvements. The 2015... The 2015 budget, the pro forma version that was distributed, was first of all created because I asked for it and secondly distributed because I suggested it. There's nothing in there that talks about electric rates in a straightforward way. So people saying that we have no interest in reducing electric rates next year because of what we showed in 2015, I still don't understand, but I may be missing something in a budget that I've been looking at for a long time. The reality is that what I wanted to see is how much surplus we'd have to rely on next year if we were to continue spending as much as we've been asked to spend on capital. And indeed, there will be a squeeze and we will have to make some tough decisions. But it seemed to me in the year in which we could afford to spend 3.5 million in capital, we should take the opportunity. As far as, um, as I, as I said to, uh, a couple of my colleagues here, w- we'll probably be the only council that reduced taxes and will be criticized for it. And so I want to take some of the key points that either have been said or I've read about that, that, uh, fall under the category of you're entitled to your own opinions, but you're not entitled to your own facts. Um, we're draining surplus. Well, actually, if you consider total surplus used in this budget, it favorably compares to the budgets of four years ago, of the previous four years. In terms of percentages of overall surplus, there's only one year in which we use less. And what I'm talking about is overall, total surplus. Why we think of the electric utility dollars as somehow different surplus dollars than the municipal surplus dollars, I really don't understand. If it would make people feel better, we could put more in electric surplus in this budget and take a little out of municipal surplus. I'm indifferent. But, but there is a difference in how that money is raised and I agree with Councilwoman Cattinello, that deserves our serious attention. What happens in electricity is very volatile. We've seen it in January of this year when what we pay for a megawatt of, of electricity, which is about 40 to 50 bucks, we're selling in the spot market day in and day out for a thousand dollars. That's a weird market to have to deal with. So when we say we have to find out how it's going to be, because we do have to go into the spot market, I need only look at January. We're, um, we're retaining, some people have said, and, and this is very difficult to deal with because on the one hand, we're draining too much surplus, but there are people who claim we're retaining too much surplus. I don't know how to resolve that. Uh, if anything, that makes the case for strategic planning. And indeed, the committees are working on guidelines and parameters that will set ranges that will be acceptable based on, on analytics and historic experience and what we see in other municipalities and states that have worked and served them quite well. So I'm, um, you know, you can't be both. Either we're spending too much or not, or, or we're not and, uh, being told that we're holding back at the same time we're spending too much is just, uh, I can't answer that. We're spending money we don't have. It's an interesting statement. It reminds me of Yogi Berra, but I'll, uh, I'll pass on that for a minute. We ended last year with approximately $15 million in total surplus, of which approximately $9 million was allocated to this budget, leaving somewhat more than $5.5 million in the surplus account. That's not imagined dollars, that's real money. That's a serious amount of surplus and close to 20% of this year's total expenditure. It so happens that that's more or less the range that we've been talking about when we've been talking about how much surplus we should be retaining. It wasn't done that way. The Strategic Planning Committee, Committees are working quite independently of what we're doing. Um, also a couple of comments made this evening I've heard before and I think are worth talking about just for a moment. First of all, at points in time, we have been the second highest cost, the second highest cost for electric in the state. We are not that today. We're the fourth highest among the nine municipalities that have their own electric companies. We're fourth. We're, we're less expensive than Pemberton, we're less expensive than South River and we're less expensive than Milltown. Now, the sad thing is, we're less expensive for what I consider to be the wrong reason. We obviously haven't done anything to our electric rates. But what's happened is what I alluded to earlier has forced the wholesale market to have add-ons, just like we did when fuel went up and people would give you a surplus charge for fuel. There's now a surplus charge in electricity that's been passed through. Hardening up utilities because of Sandy is also being passed through. So what some of our neighbors, who are in fact using the same kind of managed account process that we're putting in place, have discovered is that their rates went up. So when we say, let's wait and see how this works, it's not because we're being blo- blocking good ideas or being stupid about it. We really are not sure how it's going to work. We have projected some very interesting savings and I hope they're realized. In fact, I hope they're underestimates, but I can't tell you that today. And, and to reduce our rates today, based on some prospects in the future in this kind of volatile environment, doesn't work for me. I would have a lot of trouble putting Madison's financial position online to reduce our rates somewhat. It's also been said that we're going to save $5 million. I've searched high and low, the highest number I found was 4.2, a projection for the year But we can quibble and say that 4.2, close enough. The amount that the electric utility bills annually in this town has been in the neighborhood of $22 million. A 10% reduction is 10 point, I'm sorry, is 2.2 million. So if I look at a $5 million savings, albeit I haven't been able to find it, it's not 20% of that money, it's 44% of that money. Now, maybe we should do that, but in doing that, let's at least talk about what we're actually requesting. We're requesting 44% of that presumed savings to go back in the form of reduced rates. I hope it happens, but I'm not here today to be able to say it should happen. And then the, uh, the final point I wanted to make is, uh, this number of 92% use of electric surplus is indeed very high. I don't doubt that. I mean, I don't, I don't argue that case. It's, it's high relative to the last several years and it's high historically. But if I look at all surpluses, I said earlier, we're not spending an inordinate amount. And besides that, we're spending, I, you said 92%? I heard 92. I calculated 91. I'll give you 92. But when I looked at your budget proposal, the alternative, you're spending 83. And I don't, you know, 92, 83, I mean, it's, the difference is a serious amount of money. But on the other hand, we're still both looking at a spend of electric utility surplus that is historically inordinately high. My feeling about that is, if we can't raise it next year, if we don't see similar surplus numbers, then we don't spend as much on capital. I, I hope with everything I have that that doesn't happen and I hope we can return money in the form of reduced, uh, electric rates. I just don't see how we can in good conscience do that today. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So we'll, uh, come to the vote and I just want to point out a couple of things. One, we've had conversations, I've said this before, I'll say it again, that we should be very proud of for everyone at the table, that these are conversations that can't be had in virtually every town in the state. This is an extremely well-run town. This electric utility, obviously, as I mentioned before, with the thanks of Sam Gordon and others 100 years ago, is a godsend for this town and we wouldn't be able to do the roads and everything that we do. So thank you all for the input, the hard work. Uh, and just to be clear, and, uh, anyone that's, over the years have said, talked, discussed even a 0%, I've said over and over again, I want to see what the impact that is on the future years and I did see that. And so that's the only reason I'm even coupled with a 0% because I don't want to burden a future council with the decision of a, a current council. That same thing goes with surplus. We know our infrastru- infrastructure because of lean years, we had, we fell behind on roads and so the fact of reinvesting is very good and we need to continue that and I think we have the ability to do that. So thank you all, every one of our council members, every one of our staff for the hard work, the residents for your homework and coming down here and, and commenting. And also all the residents that may not decide to spend a Friday night with us and may be watching, thank you for being a part of our great town. And I just want to say one side thing, because there were some comments that were reactions to the letters in the papers, there was a comment by one of our residents. And I implore the council in the future, keep our discussions to this room, please, so we don't have people commenting on something that was in the paper, we have it commenting and it's on film, on the discussion. So I appreciate if you could do that, everyone at the table, because it's been several people. And with that, may I have a roll call vote on the budget?
Mr. Cattinello?
I vote no.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
No.
Thank you and thank you again for all the hard work. Communications and petitions?
Thank you, Mayor. None received. Except the one you just handed off.
Except for the one I handed off. All right, this is one of two, and thank you, Robert, for, one of two invitations for discussion. This is the one with limitations, um, and this is limited to the agenda discussion, which is a request from Open Space Trust Fund for walking hiking trails at Madison Recreation Center. Also, you may comment on any of the resolutions that are listed on the consent agenda. Anyone wishing to, uh, comment, please, uh, step forward. Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting and we now go on to our agenda discussion, which is request from Open Sp- blablabla, it's a Friday, I'm losing it now. Open Space Trust Fund for the walking hiking trails. Ostry?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Um, the, the trails that we're talking about are, um, in the Madison Recreation Complex. It was always envisioned that there would be a passive part to this as well as an active part. We've got the active part under control with the turf project. Now we're looking to, um, do the trails. And, um, from your agenda rec, I mean, from the agenda rec and, um, the material that you received, we, um, are requesting $12,500 for the materials, signposts, trail markers, uh, materials for the boardwalks over the wetland areas and any equipment needed to help with the trailblazing. Now, the work is going to be completed by volunteers under the supervision of the Land Conservancy and our Department of Public Works. Bob Vogel, our engineer, has worked with the Conservancy to draw up the plans and the estimates for the work and materials. He submitted an application to the Open Space Trust Fund, uh, for the $12,500. We met on Wednesday and we, uh, approved that, uh, the $12,500 request code of the council for approval. This will finally, um, provide that passive recreation component to the 49 acres and, um, I hope the council will support it. Any questions?
Any questions, discussion? Rob?
I think gardening's passive, right?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. You did get, yes.
So how much money is, is left in the, in the fund for this year?
Well, that's an interesting question. Um, I asked Robert Califford and, um, we have a total of debt, um, bonds, notes, et cetera, of 4,800, uh, $483,762. And, um, if I look at what, right now, our balance as of 4/11 is $55,922 approximately. Then you get to add the, you know, the, the, the taxes, he uses, adds them in July. Um, and then if you anticipate user fees of $70,000, I've added that in. So you get about, uh, $736,000, but then you have to take away that debt I just said, so you cut down to about $250,000. And now we've already approved $25,000 for the fence around the MRC. Um, you heard tonight that if we go ahead with the dog park?
Right.
That's 30.
Yeah.
Um, the trails are 12,500.
Uh-huh.
Um, we know that we're going to probably get a proposal from, um, Kathy Koltis for the Luke Miller, um, Forge, uh, roof has to be repaired, that's approximately $24,000. Um, and then you're going to have another grant from the METC for $140,000. I'm down to $25,000 left at the, after all of those things. And, um, we know that, um, there might be a request for, uh, a shed and tools for the MRC and the MRC paving and drainage of $90,000 and Bailey Allen Field.
But didn't we already, we, didn't we appro- we appropriated nine, in, in 2011, right? We, or 2012, we appropriated $90,000 for the American with Disabilities Act compliant greenhouse for the, um, community garden. They didn't go ahead with that project, right? Remember in the United, United States?
Appropriated and never spent.
Well, well, no, but we approved the funds, we approved the funds, we voted on it, the United, so, so can't they use that money to, for the other stuff they're looking to do?
Well, where is that money?
I thought.
Go ahead, Jim.
Whoever has the answer, go ahead.
You have a better memory.
To tell the truth, um, stand up. Um, uh, the, that money's been segregated and we've created a separate trust account for the community garden because it's just easier that way.
And is that 90 grand in there?
Uh, it's, there's $47,150 in there right now. They've spent a lot already over the last X number of years on all the different, on the shed and all the different improvements and the water and the irrigation and everything else. So there's $47,150. The concept of doing a trust fund makes it a whole lot easier.
No, no, I totally agree. I'm just, I'm just trying to...
Funds coming in, um, go right into, so the community garden, uh, fees go right in.
When you pay your $6 a year, it goes in.
Yeah, it's just easier that way and it segregates it out, so it, so it's out of Ostry's number that she mentioned there.
All right, so. So, okay. So there's adequate funds to do this in the dog park, it seems.
Oh, yes, to do the 12,500. Yep.
Yep.
Absolutely. But other...
Have, have, have any, have any, um, projects been brought to Open Space that have been
Are there any limitations on the money that goes into that trust fund, how it gets used? And is the borough allowed to recapture it into the general open face, open space account? Uh, on the, um...
On the, we're talking the Open Space Trust Fund?
No. The, um, the community garden.
No, the community gardens, it's a dedication of revenue by rider. It's a specific, uh, division of local government service program where you have a specific, uh, source of funds and a specific use of funds example. Another example of that type of account is police outside duty. Revenue comes in when, uh, the police, uh, work overtime, PSENG or whoever pays the revenue to go into that police outside duty fee and then it goes out.
So I'm not, but I'm not sure, was, was Rob, was Rob suggesting we use what's some of the money that's left to do the dog park? I, I wasn't quite sure.
No, no, no. It was just... When, when Ostry was going through the, the list of projects, she mentioned the garden thing and that's when I just remembered, I asked about that. So I, we shouldn't count that against the potential source of funds we have for everything else we want to do, because that would come from this trust.
Any other comments or questions? Um, I've just have one suggestion. We, we've come a long ways and we have this request form and the whole process is excellent. I, I think with, with Rob's question, probably be helpful to have a, um, funds accounting so we know exactly, you know, ahead of time what, what is committed and, uh, what we have available, so that, that would help in the process, just going forward.
Well, believe me.
But you did a great job of covering.
I tried. I tried getting those numbers early.
Yep. Now, thank you for doing it. Pat, you had something?
Well, I was just going to say, it'd be helpful, I was bugging Jim this afternoon for the last Open Space presentation to see some of the items that were on tonight's agenda, were they already in there, what were they budgeted at?
Yeah.
So for the Open Space stuff, it would be helpful if we got a, a one-pager that said, you know, what we started the year with, what we had on the list, is this one of these items, is it more or less, and how are we still looking at exiting the year, so?
Well, you know, just, you know, FYI, um, I mean, some of these projects come up as the, you know, they're not...
Yeah, absolutely. That's why I just asked what, what we had, I didn't want to, you know, we don't want to over commit, right?
And, and I mean, in January is pretty close to what? I mean, $55,000 is what I told you in, in January, it's $55,000 now. We're just starting the process. So, you know, yes, I would have had this a lot sooner.
No, that's...
Interesting.
You understand. Save all my questions to Jim. Okay, that's, uh, Resolution 120, which is on the consent agenda. Ordinances for hearings?
The ordinance scheduled for hearing was introduced by title and passed on first reading at a regular meeting of the council held on Monday, March 24th. Um, was posted and filed according to law and copies were made available to the general public requesting same.
Call up ordinances for second reading, ask the clerk to read said ordinances by title.
Ordinance 6, 2014, ordinance of the Borough of Madison adopting a redevelopment plan in accordance with NJSA 40A:12A7. in accordance with NJSA 40A:12A7 for 39 Green Village Road.
I open the hearing. Anyone wishing to comment on Ordinance 6-2014, please step to the podium, state your name, and keep your comments to three minutes or less. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move Ordinance 6-2014.
Mayor, I second that. Council discussion? Roll call vote?
Mr. Catonello?
I vote yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Walkwitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
I declare Ordinance 6, 2014, adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. And now we're on to invitation number two for discussion. This is when you may comment on anything you care, within reason. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less, and as usual, state your name, your address, and write the same on the clipboard. Anyone wishing to be heard, please step forward. Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting, and we move on to ordinances for introduction.
Okay, the ordinance scheduled for first reading has a hearing date set for April the 28th, 2014. Will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call up Ordinance 7-2014 for first reading, ask the borough clerk to read said ordinance by title.
Ordinance 7, 2014, ordinance of the Borough of Madison, amending Ordinance 32, 2011 of the Borough of Madison, adopting a redevelopment plan in accordance with NJSA 40A:12A7.
Mayor, I move Ordinance 7-2014.
I second it. Any council discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote?
Mr. Catonello?
I vote yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Walkwitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Consent agenda resolutions?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move consent agenda resolution R113-2014 through R127-2014.
Second. Any discussion or any that need to be pulled? Roll call vote?
Mr. Catonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Walkwitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
There's no unfinished business. Approval of vouchers.
Public safety, $45,284.08. Health and public assistance, $6,874.30. Public works and engineering, $213,020.14. Community affairs, $25,754.44. Finance and borough clerk, $2,875,839.36. Utilities, $88,526.10. Totals, $3,255,298.92.
Mayor, I move the approval of the vouchers. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Mr. Catonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Walkwitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Only new businesses, and we again thank everyone for spending part of your Friday night here, I appreciate it, and wish all a happy Passover. And I move that we adjourn.
All right, well done. Do we have the next meeting? Or am I? Oh, okay, yeah, so I was looking for the, I'm sorry.
Thank you for joining.